Good evening. Welcome to our council meeting. It's November 4th, 2024. And if you'd all join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just remember to vote yesterday so that we can keep this nation.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow. Gosh. Well, what's got me confused here is the person that's supposed to pray is not here tonight. So if you'll bow your head, I'll open us with prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you and we thank you for your mercy and your grace. The fact that you have forgiveness for us when we're stupid and do things wrong. And now, Father, we come before you and we ask for wisdom to be imparted to us on the council and to our staff. And for understanding and to help us to understand things. And to hopefully do things that are right in your eyes. So we thank you for that and we pray it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
With that, we'll go down and review our city council meeting minutes from October 21st. Any questions about them? I'd like to like you to move for their approval then.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the minutes of October 21st, 2024, city council meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moves us down to our appropriation ordinance number 10A from October 23rd. Counsel, any questions on that one?
Mr. Mayor, move for the approval of appropriation order number 10A dated October 23, 2024.
Second it.
Got a motion and a second to approve that appropriation ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Is there any visitors here tonight that want to say something that is not, they are not already on the agenda about? Okay. It's, yeah, you have a question about an item that's on the agenda. So when we get to that, we'll call on you. So that brings us to our first item of business, which is the Model Railroad Club lease agreement. And we'll turn that over to staff and Richard.
Yes, Mayor and Council, the Model Railroad Club has been leasing space out of our City Hall complex, going all the way back before I ever even started with the city. So it's a very longstanding relationship. And the current lease that we have with them is scheduled to expire here very soon. And so staff started reviewing that lease. And the primary term in it is the lease payment is just trying to make sure that we aren't losing money on the facility. There are some logistics if you're trying to lease facilities for money or something. We've never been a landlord in that way when it comes to space within the City Hall complex. But we wanted to make sure that we were at least recouping our costs. And so Shawna did some analysis on the historical utility rates and had recommended an adjusted lease rate based on those utilities, just to make sure that we were recouping our costs. Other than that, the term has been proposed to be extended for an additional three years. The lease rate changed to reflect those utility costs. And everything else in the lease, I believe, remaining the same, insurance requirements as they've always had. And Richard has always been very good about coming and presenting to the council when the club has activities and things that they've got going on and trying to keep you informed about the way that they utilize that space and try to make it available to people. So with that, I will turn it over to Richard if he has any comments. If not, both staff and Richard for the Model Railroad Club will stand for any questions that you may have on this item.
Richard, it's open on Thursdays?
Yes, our current scheduled, like, regular meeting is on Thursday evenings. I believe there's usually members there on Tuesday evenings and many Saturdays as well. But like our official time that we're open is Thursdays from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Thank you.
And if there are no questions, one thing that was posed to me, I know that we have this three-year term. One of the things that the membership expressed to me is if I could inquire if it would be possible to extend it to a five-year. That was just one of the things that the membership brought up to me to present to the council. I know we have the document that hasn't been signed yet for three-year terms, starting January 1st and ending December 31st, 2027. That was the only thing that membership expressed. We would be willing to extend that to five years if that's also something that the council and staff would be in favor of. If not, that's also acceptable.
Any thoughts, counsel?
Josh, do you see anything in the future where we would use the area that they're located between now and five years from now? That was gonna be my question as well.
Not that we would use it necessarily. Well, it's all hypothetical at this point. This particular lease is space that's within the City Hall complex. If we were ever to do anything with City Hall, we have talked about the need for improving it or redeveloping it. But that's always been years into the future. And we wouldn't want anything to get in the way of our ability to utilize that space. It certainly, I don't think in our future, between now and the end of this term of 2027, beyond that, I couldn't tell you. That'll be up to a lot of decision makers, how something like that might be brought to fruition. But that, if there was a reservation about going longer, it would be that. As we don't want anything holding us up from being able to utilize our space differently if we want to. But again, that's not a firm project right now. It's hypothetical discussion. But that would be the one reservation about tying it up for a longer term. Other than that, I don't have any issues with the club or anything that they've done.
So, Richard, with that input, would that be a discussion among the members at that point to say, would they be open to simply a clause, the existing lease, that if it did go five years, that there would be an avenue to exit that lease?
Well, I believe the current lease does say that basically either party can withdraw from the agreement with 60 days notice. So I don't think it would be a factor. Speaking somewhat out of discussion with the club, I don't think that, you know, if it came to that, if the city had, you know, plans for some sort of update. I think I can speak pretty comfortably that we'd be willing to, you know, help facilitate that in some manner, whether it be, you know, some sort of renegotiation of the terms of the lease or otherwise. But I don't see any reason that, like, the relationship that we've built over the since 2000 would be like at jeopardy of just coming together in a format, you know, similar to this to discuss, you know, terms and be a part even of like a strategic plan moving forward that may or may not involve us, but.
Okay. Thank you.
You'll need to come up here and give your name and address.
Pleased was what you had to say. My name's Clancy Dole. I live in Augusta and on Clark Street. I've got a question for him. Last week I saw Amtrak train come through with the coaches for Amtrak. Is that something brand new?
I don't know if it was an Amtrak train. There's a business train that runs around, like, the BNSF mainline that looks similar to like what you may be describing, like, not like passenger cars, but like older vintage passenger cars. There is a train that runs around and does some stuff for BNSF. But I don't think it was an Amtrak train, but I don't know that it wasn't. But my confidence is that it was that business train.
I know they approved the new route from, I believe it's Chicago, through Kansas City, through Wichita down to, I know San Antonio, but I'm not sure about any farther than San Antonio. But I was wondering, I know Tulsa wanted that route. So does that route possibly go to Tulsa?
It could. I don't know much about it. I could certainly look into it and deliver a report back, but I don't know much more beyond.
It struck me as a great, something great for the city of Augusta. It was slow, very slow, because I was up at the storage center when it happened. So I counted the cars. And I think there were six to eight passenger cars on that train going very slow. And I just, I just been reading about the Amtrak situation. I personally would like to volunteer to help them raise money, to find a new location and actually develop. You're probably a 501(c)(3) already, I imagine.
We are not.
You're not?
We're not.
Are you a nonprofit at all?
We are. We just don't hold the federal status. We looked into it. We actually explored. We looked into getting our 501 status. It was decided, basically, we're not in a financial position to be able to pursue that at this time. And we also weighed it against the advantages and disadvantages of having it. Some of the stipulations that fall, that are defined by it, by the government, don't apply to us. And so we didn't feel at this time that we were in a position that we could continue our application for it, so.
Yeah, for the city council's information, I have an engineering degree and I have an MBA degree and also a business called RFD Business Doctor. What I do is I help small companies that want to develop 501(c)(3) firms in order to qualify for that, to get additional funding. So I'd like to help them with their needs to develop their 501(c)(3). We can get funding, maybe get them a better, bigger location and also be a draw like the motorcycle museum is. That's the kind of things I'm looking for. I just wanted the council to have that input.
Thank you.
Noting to that, like, we are certainly open to discussions of that manner at this time. We just don't have the means to pursue them.
Yes. Any other questions?
I guess the main thing is, do we stick with three or do we go with five?
Well, it's up to you folks.
I don't know what it really matters. I think we're just talking a 15-minute time in a meeting either way. So it's drawn up at three. I would just say leave it at three. But if everybody else wants five, I wouldn't be against that either. You know, I don't, I think the way it's written, it could be one year and you can still, at six months.
At six months.
And either one can get out of it. So I don't know what benefit from going from three to five or five to three would really have.
Speaking to the termination clause, here's the language. Either party may terminate this lease at any time during the term of this lease by giving the other written notice of termination, which shall be effective six months from the date of the written notice. So kind of regardless of what term you select, you could look at this as a six-month lease.
Right.
In a lot of ways, because that's what the termination allows. So the rest of that term may not be as critical, however you want to look at it.
I don't think it's worth even taking time to change it. For the fact that it really is a six-month lease as we look at it.
So maybe that's the question, Richard, in your member discussion, what was the desire or drive behind wanting to go five years versus the three that's already in the contract?
I didn't really inquire into the intent. It was just a comment that was kind of made in open format discussion among members of the club. So I can't really speak to that other than just showing, like, continued faith in the partnership. Where we were willing to do that. The discussion, we know that, you know, the city has to, you know, clear the budget for our utilization of the space. So we just wanted to show that we are also, like, the only thing we can show in our investment is like our continued dedication to the partnership that we already have, so.
Okay. Commitment is what I'm hearing. Yeah.
24 years isn't enough?
It's certainly been gracious and we've appreciated all of it, so.
I understand.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to propose a lease agreement or approve it between the City of Augusta and the Augusta Model Railroad Club for terms not to extend, January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2027.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept and extend the lease as proposed. Any other questions about it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Richard, appreciate you.
Okay, item number two, a maintenance hangar lease with Kansas Copters and Wings Incorporated. Staff?
All right, Mayor and Council, before we get started on this item, Tammy's telling me I've got a table that I believe is in the lease that's not updated to the latest version. So I want to make sure I'm comparing that real quick. So everybody gets the same numbers? All right, so on this table right here, you should have a line up top that starts January 1st, 2025, instead of December, and then counts down January 1st to 2029. These numbers over here to the right are correct. They just need to be moved down by that date. And then for the first year of 2025, it is, the annual rent is $30,000. So I'm gonna see if, maybe you can send me that table by email. I'll make sure to throw that up. Everything else in the lease should be correct. I think we just got the two different versions of the word document. And it looks like I didn't do the most recent version when I converted this on Friday. So again, these payments are correct. They just need to be moved down one row. And then there's, the effective date is January and not December. Okay, with that, Mayor and Council, we are here tonight to discuss a recommendation for a lease with what's actually an existing business on the field that is growing and wants to continue growing their operations. And they were on the field before our shutdown and, and continued on and made it through it. And now are looking to see if they can continue developing at the airport and grow into something bigger. The maintenance hangar that we are discussing is this primary hangar. I think everybody on the council has been out for a tour. It may have been a couple of years ago. There's not a ton of buildings out there to remember, but just to try to give you a little bit of context. This is the maintenance hangar right here. Here's the main entrance. And then there's an office space and a workshop area, storage space back here. So this is the facility that we are discussing here tonight. The previous facility, you know, we had a maintenance shop operating out of there and shut down before the runway project started. And so our goal has been to find a viable tenant to occupy the space after the reopening. And our, we had a number of inquiries, quite a few inquiries. And that's always, that's always nice to see when you have different options and things to consider. And so staff worked through a process to consider those inquiries. And I wanted our airport manager to come up and kind of speak to that process. Had a recent discussion with the advisory board, discussed, the airport advisory board, discussing some of the proposals that were presented. And ended up with a recommendation for you to consider tonight. So I don't want to steal too much of his thunder. I want to go ahead and bring up our airport manager, Randy. No, you're good. I'm just providing some historical background. But Randy, if you could start all the way back to the different proposals, kind of the process we put together, the forms you used. Because what I can tell you, counsel, historically, is a lot of times people just approach us. And then when there's a lease to prepare, we prepare a lease for you to consider and then you just consider. That's the historical development at the airport. We tried to do a little bit more to the process this time. And I wanted Randy to be able to speak to that. And then also, we do have the representative from the, the other side of the lease, your potential tenant, that's here tonight. And it's a chance to ask him questions about his business, about his intent and hope and goals for the airport. And anyway, that's how we have it set up for discussion. So with that, Randy, can you walk us through the background and how did we get here tonight?
You bet. So when I first started, I came out to the airport and recognized.
Can you lean a little bit closer to the microphone?
Okay. How about now?
Better.
Okay. So when I, when I came out to the airport in, on May 9th, there was an empty hangar. And in discussions with Josh and Kami, there was a need for a maintenance shop, basically. And the maintenance shop that we were looking for is something that supports the tenants, not only in, on our field, but surrounding airports as well, not only in the smaller aircraft, but eventually into larger aircraft as well. The documents that we came up with, we basically set up a procedure where someone that would want that, that space would provide information, both financial and their vision for that business. I don't know that, again, Josh, I don't know the history. I don't think that had been done previously. But I kind of looked at it as an interview of that person to make sure that, that their goals, their desires, their business plan meshed with what the vision was that were cast by Josh and Kami to me. So we got that information out to the applicants, that applicant pool that we had. Again, starting on May 9th, there was a list, I think, of four people on that, or three people on that list to begin with. And then as kind of word got out, there were two additional applicants came into that pool. We took that information. I was, I think Josh was on a couple of the interviews. It was Kami and Susan Smith and myself interviewed the applicants. Again, with kind of an open door policy for them, they brought what they wanted to cast as their vision for this shop or this, this building and these facilities. And really just, just spent some quality time vetting each one of those candidates out and finding the one that would best fit the airport. We selected one, and he's here today, Tim, with Kansas Copters. I honestly think it's the best match for this airport that we can have. And not just from a personal side, but I think it was a unanimous decision amongst the four folks that, that did that. Shane happens to be on the airport advisory board. After we had selected that, we spent some good time with Shane and the rest of the advisory board. And I again, think it was a unanimous decision at that point to go with Tim from Kansas Copter. So I think we did a very good job of vetting that. And don't get me wrong, there's probably some, some go-backs and learns. But I do feel that with the candidates that we had, we did select the best person. And not only for, you know, the short term, but long term. And Tim, I know, wants to speak about his vision for his business and what it means to the Augusta Airport too, so.
Randy, could you share with the rest of the council why you think they are a good fit for not just the airport, but for those around us, for other customers that are coming in? Could you get a little more detail on that?
Yeah, so there were several, actually with the, with the selection of the five, the five applicants that we had, varied backgrounds. Two of them were flight schools, and I think one of them is actually here, Joe, with Augusta Flight Center. One of them was a flying club. And then one, I think you've seen the emails from this weekend, was a gentleman from, from town here. The, and I think I've mentioned this before, to have an airport, a functioning airport, there's several pillars that you have to have. One of them is planes on the field. You have to have tenants. You have to have full T-hangers. You have to have service to provide those, those aircraft, and not only the ones on the field, but the ones that are flying in to do business in Augusta or just simply coming out to, you know, have a hamburger with us or whatever it happens to be. But, so we have to have the fueling facilities. We also have to have the, the equipment to maintain those facilities. Not only the pavement. I think we're gonna talk about a snow blower here today too. But we have to have an airport that we can, that we can function. And another key point in that is a maintenance shop. An airplane is not unlike a vehicle, meaning that there had been times where, and again, I managed an airport a long time ago when I was much younger, then airplane lands and blows a tire. Without a maintenance shop on the field, that airplane is literally dead in its tracks. And even if we can get them off of there, they're now having to try to figure out how to get someone there. It's a very, very attractive part of being a tenant on the airport to have maintenance being provided as well. And that's why we ended up going with Tim. Tim has been in business for, I think, two years, two years. And I'm not gonna steal his thunder, but the vision he cast for us really meshed with long-term goals of the airport. And he's not just a, a maintenance shop, as you'll find out when he comes up and talks. But that's how we ended up. It was a very, and it wasn't, I don't know that it was an easy choice, because there was a couple of them that, that was, I think, could have, could have done just as good a job as Tim. But Tim just had that edge. He's already providing maintenance on the airport. And it isn't just helicopter maintenance either. We're also doing, he's already doing fixed wing maintenance as well. So it's, it's almost a plug and play. For him, he's gonna move to a bigger, bigger building, a bigger hangar, and be able to expand and grow his business, which again, I'll let him describe, so.
And I'll just say for additional history, Tim's ownership of the Kansas Copters is more recent in that last couple of years. But that company existed, that company that he purchased existed on the field since the early 1990s. And so he's, he's the recent owner or the, the recent buyer of that company and is currently operating it. But that has a longer standing history with the airport as well.
I just had a question, Randy, with the five different folks, companies, whatever you want. Did that go out for like a bid? Or, I mean, did we advertise that? Or is it kind of a word of mouth?
No, we didn't.
They approached us.
I didn't hear that.
They approached us.
Yeah. So it was, again, I just took what was, to be honest with you, on an Excel spreadsheet and contacted those folks that were interested in that hangar. I don't know how to describe the aviation community, but it's hard to keep secrets, is how I would describe that. When something like that happens, everybody in the area knows about it. So, you know, there wasn't an RFP process. It was just basically taking what we had already had interest in and taking and vetting those folks.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Was there an official vote of the board and that was the unanimous, unanimous one?
So, no.
How do you guys, when you say you guys?
We basically vetted it with the board. And I was looking for board approval. But the actual, the approval, to be honest, you know, was Josh and Kami and Susan and myself and just a vote there. And it was unanimous.
In terms of presenting. And ultimately, every lease that you all do is a lease with the city council. So the question that you have is, what process do you want to follow? What steps do you want to see done? What vetting do you want to see staff or anyone else do? Because you've never had any sort of process or anything laid out. And so in this case, we received inquiries from all of these different potential folks. And so created a process where they filled out that same form so that we could do some informational gathering and vetting that way. And then sit down and interview and spend time with those folks and hear what their proposal is. So based off of those proposals, that was the recommendation based off how we felt at that. So based off of those proposals, that was the recommendation based off how we felt at that point in time to make a recommendation or to make that presentation to the advisory board then to hear what those proposals are. And then see if we could get some kind of consensus out of that to recommend to the governing body. So you have the ability to craft whatever process you want. We've just never had a process before, been given a process to follow. So we're trying to do something. And if you'd like us to do something different, we can.
I was at the airport advisory board meeting when we had those discussions and, and we did do a summary of each one of the candidates that we interviewed. And we talked about how we felt like they fit within the vision and mission of the Augusta Airport and how they would be able to support us currently, like Randy said, our current tenants and also some of the future, hopefully aviation traffic will have. And it was unanimous. I mean, we, I don't think there was an official vote, but there was definitely a consensus that there, they wanted a maintenance operation at the airport.
The, my colleagues that were on the board with me are pilots. I am not, nor do you want me to be. But they were excited about this proposition. I can tell you that. And I kind of listened to what they were saying and their feedback, which was for the future of that airport. And that's what they wanted, clearly.
And we did discuss each one of the candidates because it was a difficult decision. There were a lot of internal conversations had amongst staff. And it was, there, there is, there's a lot of buzz. There's a lot of opportunity out at the airport now. There's a lot of excitement. There's a lot of interested people who have talked about building their own hangars or different facilities out at the airport. So there's, there's a lot of activity. And so a lot of our conversation also centered around finding the right place for each one of, even each one of these candidates that we interviewed, because we did see value in each one of them being out at the Augusta Airport. It's just, we were looking at this facility specifically and who we felt would fit that facility the best. And then how we could find the perfect spot for the other candidates that were interested in even future interested people that come in and want to develop at the airport.
And kind of following what Josh talked about in the process, the city of Wichita has a very similar process to what you'll see or what we use in terms of the application. And to be quite honest with you, it's not copyrighted. So I may have plagiarized that a little bit. So I plagiarized it and, and took what they had and made it an Augusta document. So this isn't just, it wasn't me going out and inventing this document. It was, there's, there's precedent already for the document we used to source these, these folks. So, and I think, you know, looking at that document, I think there were some, we got quite a bit of good information out of that. I don't know if I would change a lot. I'd have to go back and, and look at that document to see if there are things that I might change. But, but I think it was, it was definitely better than handing you a lease without knowing what was happening, so.
And I'd also note that we spent even prior to, even, I think even creating this solicitation, kind of this application, we worked really closely with Andrew and his team revising the lease agreement. We had a lot of, I believe the city had a lot of issues with the previous lease agreement. So we went into a meeting and just gave Andrew a whole list of, I guess, all, all of, all of those gripes and things that just didn't work well in the last lease. And we were able to get those updated with the help of him and his team.
And I, I did want to talk just real quickly about the airport itself and the runway. And Josh has more history of this than I do. With the new runway, understand that, and I guess maybe I should ask counsel, do you know what you had before versus what you have now out at the airport? And by the way, we opened Friday and it was, it was great to have airplanes out there. But so the old runway was a 4,201 foot blacktop strip. I don't know the, the weight bearing limits on that, that runway, but it was 60 foot wide. And my understanding, Josh, from kind of the history and what I've been told, it was the poorest rated runway blacktop wise in the state of Kansas. They had run into a problem, basically, when you're trying to get federal funds or K dot funds is they don't want to throw money at, at you unless you have a runway to support it. So with the new runway, the, it is not a extension of a runway. It is a replacement of a runway. They moved it 500 foot back for, most of it was obstruction clearance. The runway is now 4,500 and according to airport facility directory, 4,501 feet. So it's 300 foot longer. 75 foot wide, so a little bit wider and it's concrete. Weight, weight bearing is 30,000 pounds on that runway. What you have is, is a runway that can support general aviation traffic and I'll call it light corporate jet or turboprop traffic. You're not going to have, if you're familiar with a Gulfstream, you're not going to have a Gulfstream land at the airport. They could, but their, their gear would probably sink down through the six inches of concrete we have. You know, 100,000 pound airplane wouldn't do well on six inches of concrete. But it's not a, you know, it's not a, this 9,000 foot or 10,000 foot runway. It's very similar to what we had. It's just built to last a long time and give us a little bit of obstruction clearance too. So I just wanted to clarify that because there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, we're going to have business jets coming in here. And you can, but there'll be smaller business jets, if you understand. So, but I wanted to do that history to you as well. And again, you guys have all open, you, you just let me know when you want to come out. I'd love to show you the airport. It's, it's a really nice runway, so. Any other questions for me at all? All right.
Is Tim? Yeah.
All right. I'll stay up here with you, Tim.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me to come. My name is Tim McLemore. I'm the president of Kansas Copters and Wings. Most of you, I think have been around long enough. You remember Schreiber and Kansas Copters out at the airport. And, you know, there were some difficulties with the former owner. And I've tried to, in my stewardship of the company, impress you that we're a new company and we have a new vision. And we're going forward in a mutual partnership with Augusta. I think in the past, there might've been some antagonism. You don't have that with me. We bought the company when the former owner passed and we've basically acted as a informal trustee. The company was in very difficult times. It was likely going to go bankrupt. Some of you are probably familiar with those conditions. Since then, we've cleared all the debt. All the former shareholders have been paid. Our first year, naturally with any business, we didn't make any money. We lost money. That's to be expected. And I went into this proposition with clear eyes that that was what was going to happen. And then we came to the shutdown. And as, as we did in our first year, traffic grew and we worked on lots of airplanes and we did very well, albeit with some debt and some problems, we, we still made it. When the runway shut down, I was worried. I didn't know how we were going to keep the business going for a year. But my guys did it. They're amazing guys. They're probably the best guys in this area to work on airplanes. And I'm lucky to have them. What we did was we had established such a good rapport with our customers that they were willing to fly their airplanes to another location, a grass strip, land on grass to let my guys work on airplanes. And I had thought that our business was going to crater this year. It didn't. We did just about as good this year, traffic wise, as we did the first year. And we're actually going to make some money this year. And I'm very proud of that. Our projections are, given the current level, to actually increase our business by 30 to 40% based on the inquiries and the current customer interest we have. We have not had anyone come into our shop and not say good things about my guys. And I'm, and again, it, this is all them. But with that success comes a problem. Because if I don't find a way to work on all of these airplanes that want to come my way, I'm going to lose customers. And that's where I am now. That's why I've gone to Randy. I need more space. I expect a 30 to 40% increase. And I meant to send Randy a picture. The day after the runway opened, my hangar is full of aircraft right now. I cannot get another airplane in there to work on. So that's a day after the runway opened. I think within a few weeks and certainly into the summer next year, we're easily going to have seven or eight airplanes a day in our shop, which I cannot service without a bigger facility. So that's the smaller picture of my vision is working on fixed wing aircraft. And thankfully, we still have a lot of good helicopter business. But there's another piece to my vision that I share with Randy and Kami. I'm an aviation attorney. I've been in this business for 30 years. I've got clients all over the world. And one of the things I understand is you don't make money in aviation. Nobody's going to get rich. But you got to take care of your customers. And that's my vision for my business. And what I intend to do, we currently have what's known as a charter certificate. It's one aircraft with one pilot. What a charter certificate is, is basically you have the right to charge people to fly in an airplane. Where you're thinking, who wants to fly in a single engine Cessna anywhere? How do you make any money with that? You're right. Our vision is not to work with a charter certificate on a single aircraft. I've hired a charter, charter consultant. And we intend to expand our operation into small and light jet charter operations. We're already working on the director of maintenance manuals, the manuals that we prepared for the FAA. We've been talking to the FAA. We have a very good relationship with what's known as the Flight Standard District Office, the FISDO. They support what we're doing. But our vision is to bring, and we have a lease right now for a Citation Mustang. I don't know if you know what that is. It's Cessna's entry level jet. One of my clients graciously agreed to lease us that aircraft for our project. But what we intend to do is build out our charter certificate so that we can start managing aircraft and bringing more business into this airport. What that means is you may see citations coming into the airport now. We can probably, with the runway configuration as it is, handle all the way up to the, the next biggest aircraft. We probably can't do latitudes or tens, but we can certainly go through the Citation Mustang, the two, the three, the XL and probably some Sovereigns, I believe. So our vision is to be able to manage aircraft. Now, what does that mean, Tim? That doesn't mean those aircraft are going to be parked there getting maintenance, although we will have that capability, which is necessary for the certificate. What it will mean will be, we will be able to administer the management of the unbelievably complicated care of these aircraft from the Augusta Airport with our staff. We can coordinate maintenance around the world. We can have clients rely on us for expertise. All of that can happen at this airport. So that begs the question, why would anybody do that? Why would anybody pick Augusta as their aircraft manager? Like I said, I've been in aviation for 30 years. I've got contacts. I've got clients. This is a business that we can sell. I can do it. One of the things I need to do though, is renovate that hangar and renovate that office space. I can't have people showing up with the way it looks. So with me, you have a partner who's willing to put money into those facilities to make them first class, because that's what I need. I need to impress people if they do come, if they show up. I need to be able to have them see that this is where good maintenance and good management can happen. So my vision for this airport is not merely just to continue to work on fixed wing aircraft, which we will do. That is the core and the foundation of this business. But I do want to take it to the next level. And I want to be your partner to, to do that. I want to put money into those offices and that airport and that hangar so that we can develop and make it a nice presence and an impressive facility that people will be proud of. Any questions? I've got, I've got a few. So like a 145 certificate? Yes. Do you guys have that? We do. Okay. So you were wanting to expand into turboprops and light jets? Yeah, let, let me clarify. 145 is the maintenance certificate and we have that now. And that is for working on fixed wing and helicopters. The Part 135 certificate is what we will need to do charter aircraft, which will allow us, with, with those, it, it's like having street cred. If you have a Part 135 certificate, you get people's attention. You're shown that you are able to do these things that we want to do. It takes a long time, a lot of work. It's going to cost thousands of dollars of testing, tooling, approving runs. All of those things will have to happen. And by being able to hang that certificate on the wall, I demonstrate to people that we're legit and that we can do what we say we want to do. So that's, we have one now just for the single engine aircraft. It's, it's, I call it a baby Part 130. It's not real. It's just there. But we're going to develop it into a light jet certificate. Does that make sense?
How long would that take you to get to?
We expect it's going to be about two years. We've started on the manuals. We've been visiting with the FISDO. We're really lucky to have a very cooperative and helpful FISDO here in Wichita. Having been in this business, I've seen it horrible. You know, I've seen FISDOs that fight you, that make it difficult. Our FISDO is the complete opposite and we're lucky to have them here in Wichita. So, so how many planes did you guys work on last year? So last year, we worked on, we had 92 aircraft in 2023. Through September, when I did the reports for, for Josh and Kami, we had 69 aircraft. I project by the end of the year, now that the runway is open and the, and the aircraft that we have, we had in the pipeline that are still getting built out from the, from the grass strip, I think we're going to get to six, or sorry, 92 airplanes by the end of this year. And with that level, I've charted it out in my mind, monthly slope, slow periods, busy periods. I think we're going to get to probably 145 next year. How many AMP mechanics does that take? We have four AMPs now. We have three guys that are sort of the young guys coming up just out of Nayar, just out of Wichita Tech, really sharp kids. They're, they're smart. They're motivated. They learn well. One of our guys is deployed right now in DC with the Kansas National Guard. He'll be coming back in February. So then we'll be full with those three guys. My intent is as we ramp up and the aircraft start coming in, we will likely be hiring another AMP, maybe two next year, depending on workload. One of the problems I have, and, and any of you that have been in the business, you can probably identify, you kind of have your old seasoned talent up here, the guys that know everything and you're worried, when is he leaving? You've got the young guys that are at the bottom, that are learning from those old guys. I need to get that piece in the middle. The guys in the middle that carry it on between the young guys and the mid guys, I mean, the older guys. So that's the person I'm looking for now that the runway is open and we can say we have this position open.
No, not, not for you specific. I got some questions, but.
So let me understand this right. You cannot work on charter aircraft right now?
We don't have the, the credentials to do that right now. That's the process that we're moving into.
And are we not wanting charter aircraft to be at our airport?
So, so on the, kind, kind of the, the 145 and 135, 135 is a pilot side of things. And if you want to compare it to what we're talking about, most of the corporate aircraft that operate in and out of these airports, you, you're calling charter or not charter. They're, they're owned by, by companies. In fact, there's going to be a King Air F90 that's owned by a gentleman in Wichita that'll be based at our airport. Now that would, you would look at it and think it would say, is Now that would, you would look at it and think it would say is a charter airplane, but it's not. It's a, it's a private individual or a private company owning that aircraft. They operate under what's called part ninety-one rules. If he wanted to take, let's just say you win the lottery and you want to go to Des Moines, Iowa for the weekend. And I'm from Iowa. I love Iowa, so promote it all I can. But if you wanted to go to Des Moines, Iowa for the weekend, you would call a charter company. And you think of them kind of like a limousine that would take you to where you need to go. There's a little more rules and regulations when it comes to hiring out to the general public. That's what a one forty-five certificate is in the maintenance side. So this, this, and Tim and I are almost in daily conversations about, I'm trying to send businesses away as much as I can. This King Air F ninety, and this is a good example of that. Uh, one of the questions that Harry, the pilot asked of me is, are we able to maintain that aircraft here? And the answer is?
Yes.
Yes. So yes, we can already maintain that King Air F ninety with the current facilities that Tim has. Now, if you were going to use a charter aircraft, you know, a quote unquote charter aircraft where. And I'll use what you probably know, the Clemens aircraft, those beach jets. He would require a one forty-five certificate, not because he can't work on that beach jet. But because they require it for their one thirty-five operation. They want that higher level of, I'll call it documentation to serve the general public. I don't know if I cleared it up or made it.
You cleared it up for me and I appreciate that. And hopefully it cleared it up for other people that have questions about that too.
And I think one of the things I did want to mention with Tim is. The one thirty-five certificate that he went out and get, it isn't like you go to the FAA and hand them a hundred dollar bill with an application and say. I'd like one thirty-five certificate. How long did it take you to get that?
Well, the initial one we got, it was about a year and a half.
Yeah, a year and a half of time. Yeah. And the same with the one forty-five certificate. It is not, it's a very vet, it's a, and, and honestly, once you, once you're in that world. You're friends with the FAA every day. You know, you're talking to those folks every day. So. His credentials, both on the pilot side and the maintenance side are really at the highest levels that you can get. And you've seen that, that one forty-five number in some of those documents you received this weekend. So he's, he's already got it.
Were, were any of the other companies that applied for this, did they already have the one thirty-five?
No. That is one of my questions. Not the one thirty-five nor the one forty-five.
Okay.
Yeah. And I, I shouldn't say that. I. All of the, I'd have to find out the, from this weekend's documents whether that's the case or not. If you, do you know what I'm, the documents you received this weekend?
Right, the stuff we emailed?
Yes. That one I don't know.
And that was one of my bigger questions was, I feel like we got a lot of information. Last minute kind of thrown at us and I think some of those are all.
I'm confused, but also.
So the, the, the stuff I understand that you got over the weekend, when we had our sit down, that proposal was for a teardown facility. It was to fly in aircraft, break them down to parts and then sell the parts. It wasn't for a maintenance operation. I believe that he had explained that he has the ability to do maintenance, but it wasn't part of the plan or the proposal.
And that, and that seems accurate from what I read. So one way it talked.
The only thing I think on that, Josh, is I, I think he must have a one forty-five certificate to do that. And the only reason I know that is those parts aren't just sold to the US or sold to, and I'll use Europe. E.O.S. is very stringent about maintenance standards. So if he was going to take one of those parts off that aircraft without a. And part of one forty-five is an SMS process, a QMS process. He, I don't think he would be able to sell those parts in Europe or other parts of the world. So he must have a one forty-five. MRO, but not like he does for working on aircraft. This would be for taking down airplanes. Yeah. So basically what that, that operation, what we were proposed was. They would fly in an old airplane, an older airplane, uh, tear it down. To be honest with you, it's, it would be almost like. You would see at a junkyard, uh, but they would tear that airplane down, bring it into the hangar, you know, reduce it down to parts and then sell those parts is what that amount of operation amounted to. And it's a very viable business, to be honest with you. But it didn't seem to fit the needs of the tenants that we have in the surrounding area in terms of maintenance. And like I always reference, they blow a tire in the runway. I don't think we would have gotten that fixed. So.
So the. The issue that you have out here is you do have a limited amount of spaces. And I think based on, um, what Tim was explaining, that, that there's. Is a tough barrier to entry just to even get into this sort of an operation. And to finance it because of the, the difficulty, I think, trying to make money off of it. Of servicing general aviation aircraft. And so. I, I see a particular challenge if you were to try to go out and say, hey, here is raw land. Available maintenance shops. Please submit your application. To make an investment and build a brand new facility from scratch on raw land to perform a maintenance activity like that. We had proposals that were wide, we had a proposal that was a very wide ranging conceptual thing. That was maintenance and charter. It was about seven or eight different sort of, of businesses all in, all in one. But we would have to be part of building it together and trying to develop that vision. So it just, it wasn't developed at a point to act on what do we do with, with this facility? You already, you heard Tim explain his existing challenge as a business on the field. Of not being able to deal with the customers that he has right now. So if, so you have a component going on there where, um, you could potentially use this facility for something else. But then maybe an existing business struggles to survive and stay on the field because they don't have enough room to operate. Either. So there's, there's that dynamic going on. If you were to commit that facility and say to teardown. Then the space where all of our, our apron area is, where the FBO offices are. It, it's basically just a movement in and out for airplanes to be cut apart. And so the, the. The visibility of that is very different than what you have with a maintenance shop and activity and stuff in that way. And so what we had proposed or what we thought with that, those other businesses, which we like the proposals. Was to search for different space or different facilities to get them as well. And to have them on the field. So that was some of the discussions regarding those other proposals and how that fits this particular space. But again, that, that was just our take on it.
Do we have additional area for bigger hangars like this, this one here?
Yes, yeah, we have all of this. And that's what we offered is we could offer, starting with. We, we know that this owner down here has been trying to sell his facilities. I don't know how that'll ever pan out, um, in a particular business transaction with them, but there is space. All the way down to about here where the airport layout. Yeah, where the airport layout plan calls for space to be developed. So that would be. One of the challenges that we saw with some of those, those bigger idea proposals is. Once this is tied up, there's nowhere else to go. This is all boxed in. There's no other development to be had. There's nothing else to do. With this particular area. So if you have an idea that really has that potential to expand and become a different sort of business. We thought trying to put them in this space where that growth can occur made more sense, at least logistically on the airport. So again, I, I don't think there's a right answer to any of that. That's just some of the, the, um. The, the mindset, the discussion that we were having about it, trying to sort through those different proposals.
The other question I had is we don't really have a whole lot of infrastructure out there. So if we expanded into another hangar downstream. How's that gonna, I mean, I'm not saying no, I think it'd be a great idea, but.
Well, the infrastructure is the same on the airport, no matter where you are on the airport. Really. You're talking about, do you have an existing building or not an existing building? And an existing building is the cheapest barrier to, I mean, that, that's the cheapest way to enter into it. And in each case, um, each of the proposals were kind of leveraging that. And so in Tim's example, he's growing from an existing facility and trying to expand an operation. In the other cases, they're trying to test out concepts. Um, or at least two of them were trying to test out concepts to see if they would work to determine if there was a viable, viable business to grow it into. So that, that was part of the discussion as well is, do you tie this particular facility up, which is. Our most valuable available real estate for the conceptual ideas and hope that they grow. Into what they're trying to grow into. So.
And now infrastructure wise, we have rural water district water. It comes in from. A hundred and tenth street. So the water's there. It's a possibility they'd have to build out, um, some kind of sewage lagoon or something.
Or the city could build it out.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, again, you have, you have a septic system up here. You have a septic system down south already. You have raw water in both places. It's the same service line coming in. You have electricity both places. You have Cox internet. Available on the field, both places. So.
Would you still be using both locations? You will vacate the other one. Did any of the other applicants think they could use the smaller area for their, was that thought up or?
I think there was definitely some interest in, in using that facility. And that goes back to the point I made earlier about really trying to put people in the right spot. On the airport. So using this big maintenance hangar. The building that Kansas Copters is going to vacate, the vacant land that we have, where we can build something larger and newer. So taking all of these business plans and trying to put them in the right spot.
Joe, do you want to introduce yourself and your address and everything?
Yeah, uh, so I'm Joe Bertapelli, um, formerly Augusta Flight Center, now Joe Bravo, just. Since we weren't, we're not officially out of Augusta solely anymore. Uh, I lived in down in Derby, but obviously I have a vested interest with Augusta. Bought, uh, the Augusta Flight Center from John back in twenty twenty. Great timing on my part. Uh, but kept it in business, grew it. Um, we've added planes and we're. I still think we're the largest school in Wichita. And the most varied fleet you'll find in terms of flight training. Don't have the official numbers of how many students we've passed. It kind of varies on how you calculate it. But we tr- uh, train anywhere from. Like your standard driver's license for flying private pilot all the way through commercial airlines, aerobatics, all the specialty items. So I had put my hat in the ring for the main bay. And it was more of, I'd start up the maintenance business from a. I have the school. I have contacts for maintenance like Tim. And try and run it from there. Obviously I don't have a one thirty-five or a one forty-five certificate, but. I've been around, uh, Wichita since oh six because of the military and I've been training people since, uh, twenty fourteen. At least civilian side. I've used him for any number of issues that I've had. He's helped us out of a situation at Eisenhower. He's helped us. With just regular maintenance. Every guy that he has employed, I know, and I've, I've never had an issue with the work. So don't count my numbers towards his in terms of growing. Uh, obviously with the closure, it was hard to make everything work and still keep going at the same pace. My vision for basically taking his spot is to use that as a school. So I have, I was the first one to land back at Augusta when it opened. Already have four planes there. I plan on getting a fifth and a six. I have planes down at Cook. I have planes up in Newton. So, but Augusta is the best training facility I can find that's located in the city or at least close to Wichita. And a nice new runway is a great selling point. So. Just, I'm not great at sales pitches.
No, you're doing, you're doing great. You're doing great. You're answering.
Uh, any burning questions on my end?
I don't know. I mean, I like the fact that we're feeling avoid and filling the other one up immediately too. My only concern, uh, this is the way I'm leaning, just to be clear. I do feel like we got hit with a lot of information over the weekend that. I wasn't prepared for and I tried to call and reach out to everybody I could. And I didn't get a whole lot of it answered yet. So that's my only thing here. How quick does this need to happen to affect? I mean, if we held this off for one meeting. So I could kind of go through this. There's, there's just so many questions that were asked in these emails and I feel like to do our due diligence, I would like to. Look into this some more. Um, we know who the person is that emailed to his, he's. Been good to the community as far as businesses and growing stuff. And I would like to at least give him the respect of looking into this. More than I was able to. Um, I like the fact of a repair station. I think you guys are right. That's what we probably need. But I would like to at least put some time into this myself. Now, if the council doesn't want that, that's. Council's choice, the rest of the council, but I didn't, I didn't have enough time to get stuff happened over the weekend or today. Um, I did talk to Tom Lefler. He said a lot of the board meetings, a lot of the, they haven't had enough of quorms for most of the meetings here in the last multiple meetings. Okay.
Yeah, and he wasn't present at the last one.
He said that, he did tell me that. He wasn't sure what happened at the last one. So he, he, he did tell me that, but, uh. That's why I'd asked, was there a vote, you know, because if there was a vote, I would have felt a little better, but it sounds like there semi was a vote. Everybody agreed on it. That's just where I stand. I'd, I'd like a little more time to. There's just a lot of questions and Josh, I know you were sick. I didn't want to bother you.
The impact to the, to the potential tenant is greater than any impact to us. So I, I think it's more important for him to speak to it than. Than us. We, we can make, do whatever you need done, but that the impact is theirs.
And I, and I think it's a pretty important decision with the money that we have wrapped up in the airport, that we make sure we put the right person in the right spot. Um, I certainly don't know anything about aircraft and I certainly can't fly one. So, um, I'm kind of. Looking for answers from other people and taking input, so.
Yeah, I, I, I'm assuming the other individual that's doing this is. The reason he thinks it's more beneficial is maybe more employees would be hired to do that work. I don't know. I just, I'm, I'm confused by what I read. I didn't have time to get anything answered. And I'm trying to see why that would be more beneficial to the city of Augusta or why they think that would produce more revenue for the airport. I just didn't have time to get answers.
Like I said, when we had the pitch, there wasn't another pitch for a maintenance shop.
Right.
There was, there was a pitch of could potentially do that. Or something else, but that wasn't the pitch.
And then my gut tells me we should have the maintenance shop. I, I, you guys are ninety-nine percent sold me. I just still have these questions.
I'm not trying to sell anybody on anything, but in terms of. I, I don't even know what showed up over the weekend because I'm just getting back today. So I haven't even read it. I just know that something appeared. But in, in terms of answering the question of what the pitches were. You had the one that was, uh, developed and had the maintenance shop element of it. And, and then the others are. To the extent that they speak to it are, are kind of incorporating it into what they're talking about doing. So I, I don't know what came over the weekend. I'll have to look at it.
And that's what I was, that was the next question for you. Did you see, were you able to get answers to all that? So I feel like there's a lot. Of information was given to us and I don't know if any of us got answers to those questions and I know I didn't. And I, I knew you were sick and I didn't know if you were coming tonight and I didn't want to bother you with it, Josh, to be honest. So that's why, that was my only reservation. Would it? Would it be dire if we held two weeks out before we made this final vote? I mean, is it gonna? I don't know when you guys need this stuff answered to be moved in in time because I don't want to cause delays with your businesses, but. And the rest of the council may not have this. It may not matter what I think if.
So I think from Tim's perspective, I know. So I think from Tim's perspective, I know he was interested in getting some of those renovations started. And so obvious, I mean, I would assume he's not going to move forward with any of those until the actual lease is approved. So that could push back, have some, cause some pushback for him.
That was another question. Do we, is there a dollar amount of renovations we're helping with and you're providing? Do we, any, you're doing it all? Okay.
And the trade off we made, you saw it in.
Right.
Well, let, let me uh, here's that corrected table. So this is the table you should have. Anything else about the lease should be accurate. So the lease rates were based off of the analysis that, if you remember before we shut the runway down, we actually did appraisals and analysis to determine lease rates for our airport. And so uh, these were based off of that in the first year, knowing the investment that Tim was planning on making in the building. That was the one adjustment provided is it's a little bit lower first year in order to offset a little bit in, in terms of those improvements. But then it, beginning and at the end of that first year, that's when the, that regular rent rate kicks in. So there is some acknowledgement that he's investing in the facilities, but I, I don't know that that's necessarily going to cover what his plan is.
Josh, and on that lease, was, is he able to sublease the building to someone else?
Only with our approval. So it's not prohibited, but you would need city, your approval, council approval to be able to do that.
It looked like, that was one of my questions, was sections eleven and section nineteen may conflict with each other just for that purpose? Because section eleven of the lease has the language that says, I'm going to pull it up right here. Uh, notwithstanding any other provisions in the agreement restricting or prohibiting any assignment or subletting, lessies shall have the right without lessor's consent to conduct lesses's activities and to enter into supply contracts, service contracts, maintenance contracts, storage agreements and sublease agreements with lessies vendors, customers, members, affiliates, et cetera. But then nineteen is what you just said where it says without the lessor's permission, you can't do that.
I'll defer to Andrew.
Yeah, I'm looking at now, so this is just an off the cuff opinion. Um, I mean, eleven restricts the people you could possibly sublease with? To basically affiliates and customers, listed people, whereas I think you would need approval for.
But even that, is that inferior to clause nineteen or are they equal power in the lease?
Well, I think that eleven would give the, like eleven would give the lessy the, the ability to sublease and have those contracts with the listed people in eleven despite what nineteen said.
Okay.
That would be my off the cuff opinion.
I don't know. I personally like more time too because I was sitting here reading through the email and listening.
And I, my question to staff, as far as the staff report goes, the disposition of the existing lease, I don't see that in the same recommendation. So I know it sounds like there's an interested party, but what, how does that all work as far as a sequence of events? Because if we approve this lease, do we have the next domino of exiting the prior lease? What is that?
Yes, he'll have to exit the prior, his current lease for his current building. And then we needed to talk about pretty much how this works out, how we will handle leasing out the next building. You know, if we'll follow a similar process or, or what, what that will look like. Because there are multiple parties once again that are interested in that space. And then that lease will need to be rewritten as well.
Tim, I just want to say, um, regardless of what gets decided in this moment tonight, I appreciated your commentary regarding the history of Kansas Copters and your commitment to the integrity and carrying that business forward. I appreciate that comment significantly.
Tim, could you speak on what this will do if we just table it for one meeting?
So are we talking about two weeks or a month?
Just to, just to the next meeting. That's all I'm looking for.
So I've had contractors already come. We're discussing demo, um redoing the floors, moving some walls, uh finishing. So naturally that's all going to have to slide. Um, I don't know if these guys can reschedule. I want to be your partner and I want you to make a good decision. And I'm not going to stand here and cry because I didn't get it tonight. I want you guys to be comfortable with me because we need to go forward feeling good about each other. So, you know, I want you guys to, to do what you need to do. I'll make adjustments. But um, you know, I would ask that um, that we adjust the lease start dates because I'm going to have time, I'm going to have to shift my, my plan and my schedule and my moving and all of that. So I mean, that would be the only accommodation I would ask for if, if we're going to.
Absolutely. Do I need to make a motion that we table this conversation till our next meeting?
Next meeting.
I make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to we table this conversation until our next meeting.
Good.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to table this item until the next meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I want to thank you all for your interest and your.
My pleasure.
Yeah, please don't take this, yeah, don't take this like this isn't what we want. I just feel like we have an obligation to get all that information we're given.
Yeah, we, we really got hit hard over the weekend with lots of email.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And just following up with this, so uh, there's a, aviation has its own special terminology. And if there's any hope you need in uh, understanding any of that information, I think it's also fair, if you're going to look at one, you should look at all.
Yeah, for sure.
Um, and we can get that information to you, you know, for everyone that was out there.
That would be great.
Person that was sending that stuff to me Sunday. So I don't know how you'd want to do that, Josh, send it through you and Kami or? And maybe I could just summarize those?
Just, just have, just route everything to me and then we'll figure it out. Council, I would ask if you have any specific questions or follow up things that you need staff to do, the, the sooner we can get your questions, the, the better to, to uh prep that out. So.
No, for sure.
Okay.
Thank you again, everybody.
Yes. Let's move to item three, which is purchase of the snow blower for the Augusta Municipal Airport. Staff?
Yes, uh, mayor and council, this isn't a specific item that we had uh planned originally in the, uh, in the upcoming budget, but I think it's a recognition of a new reality with the facilities that we have that are quite a bit more substantial. And also a recognition of some of the challenges that we've had historically when it's come to emergency snow uh maintenance out on the field. And we have been able to provide assistance, use some of our bigger trucks and other things to help in the past in, in moving snow, but the impact of that is you create windrows. And one of the things that would help in mitigating the impact of those windrows of snow is the snow blower that'll get that further away, remove it from the pavement where it's, it's not in play for aircraft, vehicles or other things that are moving. If you recall, we have had claims submitted against us in the past uh, when we've had wind road um built up, snow piles that were melting and turning into little ice skating rinks near our buildings. Then again, this piece of equipment is, is a chance for us to try to mitigate some of those, uh, some of those things and improve our maintenance capability. And we also with that new runway have a lot more pavement to take care of as well. So uh, staff did some research into this and they found a unit that um, our new tractor equipment that you've been supportive of can operate. And uh, given how lean we've run the airport this year budgetarily, uh, we thought it was worth asking if you would consider allowing us to get this equipment. Randy, would this be available going into the winter? Is it available now? Or would we have to, would we have it for this season?
Uh, the, I think it was a six week lead time, so it would probably be late December when we would get it at this point.
So we, I mean, Decembers can be iffy, but that's still early enough, I think, to catch the core of our rush harder winter that we would normally have. So uh, tha- that's kind of the background. Again, this was not a specific piece of equipment that we originally had in, uh, in this budget, but we do have uh, money set aside for capital projects, capital equipment. When opportunities arise and the budget has been running very lean this year. And so we thought that it was at least worth asking if we could get this going into the winter season. So that's why it's coming to you tonight.
Counsel. Our street crews able to do anything out there at the airport with the equipment we have in the city or anything like that?
They have the trucks and the trucks will um, generally will leave windrows. And so that's what this is trying to mitigate. It's trying to get that a little bit further away from the runway.
We, we do have a, a plow at the airport, but it's just a plow on a three quarter ton pickup. So we, we, we have some capability, we do not much, and if there's a heavy snow, we're in trouble.
So what, what this is doing, it's enhancing the airport staff capability to do some of their own work. Rather than kind of sitting helpless until, until this city has been cleaned up. Because um, our street crews generally won't go out there at all until they've done the uh, the arterials, the emergency routes and things in town here. So this is just enhancing their capability to do some of their own work.
I was just asking because you said the budget is what it is and, and uh, end of the year and everything, I just.
Anybody else have questions? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the purchase of the proposed snow blower through Prairie Land Partners in the amount of nine thousand five hundred ninety-four and eighty-two cents.
Thank you.
Got a motion in a second.
I got a quick question. That, that says nine thousand five hundred ninety-four and our minutes says eleven thousand seven hundred and one.
It's the nine thousand five hundred.
Yeah, it's the nine thousand.
I was pretty sure.
So eleven thousand seven hundred and one was, is the retail pricing. The government quoted price is nine thousand five ninety-four eighty-two. And so I think the staff report states it correctly. It's, it's just the agenda, the, put the retail number down instead of. So we're going off of the action in the staff report.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And now that it's approved, I hope I never have to use it.
Okay, item four, removal of the trees at Wichita RV, staff?
Mayor and council, some of you are going to remember this, some of you probably won't. But um, we have a, a history working with obstructions in our runway protection zone. That's basically the uh, the vertical trapezoid at the end of our runway. So the area that is potentially within the flight pla- uh, flight path of an airplane. And uh, long before we even started the runway project, FAA had noted that we have uh, tree growth that is on the Wichita RV property that is on the north side of the highway. So the airport's just south of this. The runway is actually directly in line. That tree growth was noted as an obstruction before we ever started the runway project. Now the runway project has changed that dynamic by scooting the runway back and changing the uh, the glide slope itself. And so the trees have been moved from a status of essentially not a current dangerous obstruction that you have to get remedied, which is where we've been at for the better part of the past decade, to potential problem in the future, but nothing that the FAA is going to make you do something about at this moment. Now, what I can tell you is we do have an navigation easement on this property, at least covering a portion of the property. It's not on the whole thing. And the navigation easement basically said that we have the right to enter to deal with those obstructions. That's not how that worked. Uh, we did not always have a willing property owner. Uh, we tried to negotiate multiple times to get access to that property for a long time. And we're not able to get that worked out. That property owner is, is not in the mix anymore. There is a different property owner. And they are very willing to have the trees dealt with at this point in time and have them removed. And so what we can tell you is other airports that have run into these obstructions, uh, if they don't get them removed, they do run into problems with FAA funding with uh, because that's the FAA's cudgel. If you can't get something accomplished that they want to see accomplished, the threat is to withhold your funding. And so in our minds, while you have a willing property owner is allowing us to get access to that property to address the issue, that we try to take advantage of that uh, positive relationship and we get out there and actually do it. So um, even though the status has changed from the immediate hazard to the potential future mitigation issue and hazard, we think now is the time to take advantage and it's probably the cheapest opportunity you're ever going to have to do it. So staff um, took the opportunity to get a, a couple of proposals for removal. Originally, we looked at doing it ourselves, but when you get out there, this few, what looks like a few trees from the air is not. It is a lot of trees. Um, so the red areas were the uh, at one point, the required mitigation. The yellow areas were recommended mitigation. We asked the uh, the vendors to give us proposals because our staff was going to be tied up on this for a considerable amount of time. And uh, the vendors came in and we did get two proposals. One of them came in, I believe, to do all of these areas in the red and the yellow for nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars and to have those materials hauled away. So for that pricing, that's better than anything we would ever be able to do ourselves. And we don't have the burden of having to deal with that material once it's down. And for that twenty thousand dollars, now you're potentially mitigating a problem that we're going to have ten, fifteen, twenty years down the line. So we at least wanted to bring the opportunity to you. You have the option of not moving on this item at all. Because the FAA has changed it where it's not a required mitigation the way that it was before we did this new runway project. But it is a potential mitigation problem in the future. And the airports that have had to, to deal with that, it has been costly for them to figure that out. So we wanted to bring the opportunity to you. You have the option to not act on it. But we did get a very favorable price and so we wanted to bring that to you. And we are recommending that you authorize that little bit and allow us to move forward.
Josh, have we worked with this company before?
Uh, I, no, I don't believe that we have.
Okay.
My, my guess is that, that they're trying to break into the Butler County area or market or even with the city. And that's why we got such a low number off of that.
Josh, from a, looking forward, I know that this property recently changed hands. And so are there deed restrictions on if we invest in taking these trees down? Is there anything that prevents the current owner or future owners from doing anything that puts buildings or additional trees that would?
So the, the same navigation easement is in place as has always been there, which limits the, the types of things that can't be constructed and the height. When I found out that they had the new owners and, and I spoke to those owners, I explained to them the history. So they're very well aware of the history. I explained to them the easement. I sent them the. I explained to them the easement, I sent them the documentation for the easement so that they were aware. And I believe this was the property manager. So I don't know if they've got a final owner resolved, but the folks that are managing the property is the ones that we were working with. And so what I asked them is can you, whoever you're working with, please make them very aware upfront that these documents exist, that we have these rights. And I don't know if that gets incorporated in whatever documentation that they're doing or not. But my hope is if they're aware of it, then that is something that gets passed on to any new owner. My fear was something that old, that's very uncommon. They probably, a lot of folks could miss that easily. So I, I don't know how it shows up on a, on a title commitment or anything else like that. But I did try to make it explicit to them that we want any new owners very well aware of that easement.
Any other questions? I would encourage you to okay this myself, counsel. I've dealt with this property for almost twenty years.
We tried about six different times and we're never able to get access to cut those trees.
So Mayor, I make a motion to approve the quote from Double J Services LLC, the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred dollars for new trees at the former Wichita RV Park property, I'm sorry, across Highway fifty-four from the customer's labor board and authorized airport manager design.
Second. Got a motion in a second, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, declaration of surplus property, staff.
Chief, would you mind coming up? Yes, Mayor and counsel, this is, I might want to say a very routine item, but it is routine in nature. And it's the second or third time, I believe, a list like this has come to you for presentation. Want to turn it over to our public safety director, Todd Ackerman.
Mayor, council, good evening. Yeah, this is the second batch of weapons that we've taken out of our evidence holding facility that have been cleared to be sold. As before, they can only be sold to a dealer and they have to, it's a bidding process for a whole lot. We don't sell them individually. And the only thing I would show you is at the bottom of that page, there's two weapons that do not have barrels because they are sawed off weapons. We're not able to trade them. They'd have to take the barrels off anyway, so. But although every gun is, the files have been gone through and cleared. And we even get some guns back to families. But these are all cleared to be declared surplus so we can get them on the auction. The monies we use from this like the last time are put aside and we're to, to purchase our new firearms one of these days, get new handguns.
So Mayor, make a motion to approval of declaration of guns from the evidence locker at the Augusta Department of Public Safety as surplus property and authorize disposal is allowed per statute or city policy.
Second. Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Can I have a show of hands, who's coming Saturday night? I'm just trying to get a meal count for Saturday. Who's?
What'd you say?
So there's four, not the rest are coming? Okay. You guys are coming? Okay. Good. All right, thank you.
I do sell guns.
Item number six, urban area boundaries and functional classification system updates, staff.
Yes, Mayor and counsel, this item is coming back to you from the prior meeting where it was tabled. I did get a listing of questions from one council member over the, the two weeks. And so I tried to provide some response to it, but I don't know how helpful tha- that'll be. But let me go ahead and go through the, the bullet point list and I'll try to provide as many of the responses as I can. So this is related to the urban area boundaries, the functional classification system. Coming to you from KDOT, they're, they're trying to get the roads classified so we can determine what roads are going to qualify for federal money. Want, the, some of the questions, I, I think you had heard at the prior meeting, some of them were a bit newer. But as far as annexation and city boundaries goes, in real life, real lines drawn, this does nothing regarding annexation or our legal city boundaries. We're not taking any new land into our legal city limits. We're not taking any land out of our legal city limits. We aren't annexing, this has nothing to do with that. We are not displacing any county property owners. We're not doing anything with anybody's land with this action item. We are not changing or displacing city wards with this action item. We're not changing any other lines other than the lines on this map in terms of what a road is classified and how we fall under these, these UAB and functional classification systems for the sake of the road funding. So we aren't dealing with any land changes in real life in any way. There is a question about Santa Fe Lake and Augusta Municipal Airport being included, or are they in the map? They are shown on the county's version of this map because every city has one of these. And then the county areas have their own. So Santa Fe Lake and Augusta Municipal Airport are island annexations, but they're a long distance away from the core city limits and they don't have any arterial or collector roadways that are consequentially impacted by the system or connected to any of the, the current streets that are on our map and have been on our map. There was a question about where Andover's urban area boundary is. In real life, it's at Indianola Road. I have no idea what their road classification map says. I can try to pull that up, but it's at Indianola Road. But we're not moving any real boundaries with this action item. So I don't see it as relevant to the action item. There is a question of what engineer is signing off. So we have one city engineer. So if they require a, a city engineer to sign off, that would be JEO. So the item itself is actually a routine item prompted by the changes in the US Census. So they did an update on it. The maps themselves are not changing very much from the ones that you have in the past or had in the past. We talked about the couple of gray areas that were different. But actually it's a smaller, we have, we would have a smaller area now than we did previously. So if the map is changing anything, it's making our area slightly smaller than it was before. We did attach the documents that were sent to us from the state. So these were the letters that we received where they're explaining what needed to be done with these items. So that was providing a little bit more background than maybe you had at the last meeting where this was discussed. The second one gives the most detail about the highway classification system and how it's used. So again, the map is designating these different road types. Major collector, minor arterial, minor collector. It's because only a certain intensity of road qualifies for federal funding. So that's the biggest thing that your designations change is, is do you view it as a different intensity road than what this map is showing? And if you want it to be eligible for funding, then you need to make note of those changes. That's the typical changes that you see happen when staff does these reviews. And so when we did those reviews, we did not find anything that's, that needed, that needed to change substantially. And so we brought that back to council for the map approval at the prior meeting. So that's the newest documentation we were able to provide to try to explain the background more. If you have other questions, you can go ahead and ask them. But I was just trying to respond to as many as I could that we got since that last meeting. So with that, I know we had a gentleman that's here to speak on it, it sounded like. And so I'll turn it over to council for any questions that you have of us and of the public.
A couple of quick things I pointed, I, I marked down and listed. When we heard the airport presentation was, I think the flight instructor misinformed you and he said that it was inside the city limits. I don't believe the airport is inside the city limits. Cause he talked about, you mentioned.
The airport, the airport is an island annexation.
Right. It's not in the city limits, though.
It's an island annexation of, it is an island of the city, yes.
And is it on your urban map?
Yes.
The map, the map you just, could you pull that up?
It, it's not on the functional road classification map. It's covered by Butler County's map. There, there's nothing for us to do out there. We don't have any roadways out there.
There is a road out there. In fact, you, you, you've closed it off, I think.
We don't have any roadways out there. There are no roads on the airport property that are public roadways.
There's a road to get to it on the side of the airport, correct?
County road.
It was on the county map.
Okay, well then on the county map, does it appear, does the airport appear on their county map? They should have something for the county. If you look at that.
The, the airport and Santa Fe Lake all appear in the county.
Could you pull that up on your screen? Like, so I could see it?
If council wants me to do that, I will do that.
I'd like to see that.
I'm sorry, what's the point? I'm not sure.
I want to see what is on the county map to make sure Santa Fe Lake is on there as well as the airport. I already contacted Andover. Andover has not done anything on this subject, zero.
And why, why are we taking up city, city council time to, to pull up a map for you that you can pull up at home?
I can't pull it up. Why, why, why would you object to me requesting that?
I'm not objecting to your question. I'm asking why your desk, desk.
I would hope maybe the city council, somebody would have the opportunity to make a motion that we take a look at that.
What are we looking at?
You're looking at the county map, the county urbanization map, which goes along with Agenda twenty thirty is what you're looking at. You're looking at what's Agenda twenty thirty and they're trying to make Augusta a fifteen minute city, which is fine. That's a bonus for, for Agenda. You want to be a fifteen minute city. That's in Agenda twenty thirty. It was adopted by the UN in the United States is along, going along with it. I have no objection to it.
Who's they? When you said they are.
The World Economic Forum, which is part of the United Nations. This, the American, uh, United States has adopted a twenty thirty agenda. And, and we are targeted to be a fifteen minute city, which is great because I think we, we, we should be. They want everybody to be a fifteen minute city. We're already one. We can go to the top of the, top of the list. The white trail is in addition to it. That's a plus. If the train I talked about is a, is an Amtrak train that stops in the, stops at our station, that's a plus. Why aren't you looking at things like that? Why aren't you taking the time to do, to investigate it and you're objecting to a county map? Did you pull it up finally?
Why are you, why are you accusing us of that? You have no, you have no idea what we look at and what we don't look at, sir.
You didn't look at this? Did you look at that map? Was it in your packet? Was it in your agenda packet?
During this.
So this map was not in your agenda packet?
No.
So obviously.
But the map is that we're looking at.
Okay, but you, my point was you didn't have it in it. I had to come in and request it, which I'm glad you put it up, but it was not in your packet.
For what ends, though? What are you trying to prove here?
I see it in there. That's fine. I see the airport and what is the street next to the airport? I can't see it. What's that identified as?
Indianola.
It's what?
Indianola.
Okay. So Indianola is not a, a major thoroughfare then?
No.
It's not?
County road.
Okay. So what are they going to do to improve it?
You'll have to ask Butler County.
Okay. Have you, I noticed that on the, one of your submissions for number, let me get it here. Does that have the right one? It was last meeting and it was for submission number twenty-four eighteen, twenty twenty-four dash eighteen. Could you tell me who are the, the people that are required to sign off on that? That you submitted last meeting?
Nothing from the last meeting because nothing's been acted on.
If it's listed as the county, it's the Butler County Board of Commissioners.
What it says on there, it says appropriate city officials, mayor, county concurrence, appropriate county official. Do they sign off on that?
They sign off, they, they can sign off, it'll go to Butler County after this meeting. And those documents were provided by KDOT for us to use as a template.
How come it's not on twenty nineteen? If it's on eighteen, shouldn't it be on nineteen? It's not.
What, what's your question right now?
How come the county official is not on the twenty nineteen document for approval? It's on eighteen, why wouldn't it be on the nineteen?
Is this something we have to prove every year?
I'm not sure what he's asking.
Okay, on the twenty-four, twenty twenty-four eighteen document, the county official is required to sign off on it. It is not required on twenty nineteen or twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, I'm sorry. Why is, why is the county required to sign off on that?
Mayor Rowley, I know you didn't state that there was a time limit, but I did set the timer just to be safe.
Okay. What has that got to do with this current?
I mean, I will say the functional classification system is guided by the Federal Highway Act. So whatever requirement is the Federal Highway Act and who needs to approve that. So the city and the county need to approve those classifications because those roads run through the whole county and how they're identified needs to be consistent. The first one is the urban area boundary map. And so that is just within, that's just the city approving that.
The other, the other point I want to bring up is where does the brownfield area listed? Where does that appear on the map? The county map? Since you don't have it and, and Andover doesn't have it, do you have the brownfield area designated on the county map?
It's not in the city limits.
I know it's not. Is it on the county map?
It's.
It's not our job to put it on the county map.
Just be in the county. It's just in the county.
I know, so it's, it should be on the county map, correct? The one you just showed me. Could you pull that up again? Do you see it up there?
I think it's the wrong meeting.
Space on this map, that's what it would be.
Sir.
The whole map's white.
White space right here in this area. Urban boundary.
Have you made any proposals about what to do with the brown space? To turn it into a green field?
Not related to any of these action items.
In other words, if you wanted to convert that brownfield into a green space, which you could do, there are grants for it. It would not be part of your urban map that you, you pointed out. That's not your responsibility, that would be the county.
Not related to these action items that the council is trying to act on.
So there would be no restriction for you doing that then?
The city can't, it's not in the city limits, it's not city owned property. The city cannot act on that right now.
In other words, you can't do anything about it. It has to be somebody else, the county would have to do it.
Has to be whoever controls that land.
That's all I wanted to know. That's answers all my questions. All right.
Thank you, good night.
I just want to bring these things to your attention. Thank you.
Aye?
Yes.
You good on this?
I'm good.
I did a lot of reading on this and there's a lot of pros and cons on it. And the biggest thing was when you have a city complex right next to a agricultural field, it messes with prices, whether they're going up or down or, you know. And I think a lot of this is a bit confusing. It's easy to understand, you're doing it to keep up with a update that we need to do from past time.
On census.
But it, it's, it's, it's a bit confusing when you. instead of making a square, you follow a river or something of that nature, you know, it's, I, I don't, I don't get uh, who's controlling the gray part of the box that we're changing from and why? That, that, that's the part about it that was most confusing to me. Um, even though they're little boxes, little triangles, whatever their change is, uh, it, it doesn't, it doesn't, uh, I, I, I don't know if it's got to do with the people that own the land and they're not getting into it or being made available to it. You know, there were just a lot of questions that I had.
So Josh.
And I didn't understand it.
Josh, correct me if I'm wrong. A, a vote yes would be the okay, and then we could possibly get federal funding for the roads inside that map. A vote no would not allow us to possibly get said grants or federal funding.
I'm honestly not sure because I don't know anyone that's ever voted no on this, like, like anywhere, because it is a routine item. I think we're, we're imposing a lot of extra meaning on what this particular item is. Now, we also don't apply for a lot of federal funding on roadways that are not on state highways. So like it's, it's not something that really impacts us on a day to day basis all that much. Um, unless that annual allocation or something from the federal government is, is in play or, but, um, I, I don't. I'm, I'm sorry, just staff has struggled trying to understand, um, everything else around the item that, that's being asked because we just don't see that with what this item is. We, we see that as being unrelated. And so that, that's where our struggle has been.
Sure. No, I understand. I understand. Anybody else have any questions? All right. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for approval, resolution number 2024 dash 18 to update the urban area boundaries for Augusta, Kansas, according to the attached UAB description and a corresponding map authorization, may your sign.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2024 dash 18. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Now we need a motion with resolution 2024 dash 19.
Mr. Mayor, consider approval for resolution number 2024 dash 19 to update the functional classification system for Augusta, Kansas incorporating the attached proposal, urban function, classification changes, corresponding map authorized, and the mayor to sign.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2024 dash 19. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move down to item seven, agreement with Mulvane for advanced water payment.
Yes, Mayor and Council, um, as you're aware, we are working through the repair to the, uh, transmission line to the city of Mulvane and, uh, you're aware of the, the price point of what it's going to cost us to get that fixed. And so staff was looking for, uh, different sort of ways to, to, um, try to minimize it to the extent we could, or just make it easier for our budgets to absorb. And one of the ideas we came up with was, uh, reaching out to the city of Mulvane to see if they would, um, assist with some of that funding and, and the method that we came up with was for them to essentially, uh, prepay for water that they're planning on purchasing next year. And so that would give us cash on hand earlier than we would typically have it to help us make payment to the contractor when we have to do that, therefore allowing us to spread the financial impact over multiple budgets instead of just one. So that was the idea we came up with. We reached out to their city administrator and, uh, he spoke with his, uh, council and they were willing to help with that plan. So their attorney, um, drafted this proposal and when you read it, it kind of reads like a, a short term loan is the way that they drafted that. So, um, the reason you see it with a small amount of interest and other stuff is, um, I'm reading that as a present value of money sort of thing, that that's a hundred thousand dollars. They don't have in a bank account earning interest or something since they're paying it early. So they did draft it, um, to essentially be a hundred and 1,634 dollars of credit that we are providing to them for that money, uh, for, to help us with the payments. So that was the one kind of little quirky thing I saw. I understand why you do it. Um, I don't see, uh, be, being a big, uh, financial difference to us one way or another. But, uh, the long and short of the agreement is they're going to prepay us that hundred thousand dollars. And we'll use that to at least cover half of that construction payment. And then we'll be able to spread out the impact to our budgets over two-year period instead of just one. That'll make it easier for us to deal, uh, with our debt payments in the water fund and other stuff that we need to make sure to have sufficient cash flow to pay for. So the grand scheme of things, we're just trying to absorb the cost of that, uh, project within our budget without having to impact our own customers or, uh, ratepayers. And, uh, Mulvane's assistance in this way, uh, will help us do that. So, I will stand for any questions. Uh, the agreement was sent to our city attorney. He reviewed it. Uh, we had one minor change, um, on there and, uh, I'm going to check and make sure that we got it in here because I apparently missed some things when I came in on Friday. Uh, the only, the only change he had is they referred to us as a city of the first class and we're, uh, we're a city of the second class. So that, that was the only change in the document. Otherwise, city attorney was comfortable with it. So with that, counsel, if you have any questions, I will stand for them.
Good job thinking outside the box here.
Yes. Good job. And I, I want to thank Mulvane publicly.
Agreed.
Being part of this.
Yep.
Mayor, make a motion approval of water prepayment agreement with the city of Mulvane dated November 15th, 2024 for prepayment of $100,000 for a portion of its water for 2025 and authorize Mayor Rawlings to sign the agreement.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight, Kansas Power Pool Voting Delegate Appointments, uh, staff.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, this is a routine item. Uh, appointment of our voting delegates to Kansas Power Pool. I believe you did something similar for KMEA at a prior meeting. So, recommendation is for appointment of our Director of Public Utilities, Tim Johnson, as the city's, uh, delegate and Superintendent Mark Kane as the alternate.
Counsel.
I'll make a motion to point Director of Public Utilities, Tim Johnson, as the city's voting delegate and Electric Production Superintendent Mark Kane as the alternate voting delegate at the annual membership committee meeting of the Kansas Power Pool.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Got some matters here. Uh, got to fill some ad hoc committees. So item number one is the Special Alcohol Grants Ad Hoc Committee, which I believe Ron, Eric and, uh, Ron Rivas and Eric Burke and Bob Bailey were on. We need to replace Ron and see if these, Eric and Bob would retain that.
Yeah, I'll stay on.
I'll stay on.
Anybody else want to volunteer?
Sure.
Okay. Sean Davis. We have a motions to that effect.
I'll make a motion to approve Sean Davis.
Second it.
I'll just, I'll go through them. Sean Davis and Bob Bailey and Eric Burke to the Special Alcohol Grants Ad Hoc Committee.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now the utility of abatement ad hoc committee, which consisted of Jeff, Mike Martin and Tom Luffler. So we have to replace Tom Luffler and see if Mike and Jeff will stay on.
I'll stay on.
Will you stay on?
Yeah.
Okay. So who wants to take Tom's place?
It's just one short meeting.
I've been on a zillion times. I'll do it.
Kip said he'll do it. Let's have a motion that puts Kip on along with, uh, Jeff and Mike.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to put Kip Bridgerson, Jeff Brown, who was the other one? Mike Martin, uh, on that ad hoc committee for 2025 for utility abatement application, that committee meeting.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our city manager would like to make a sales tax presentation as that's going to be voted on tomorrow. Are you up to that tonight, Josh?
Yeah, um, Mayor and Counsel, I, uh, I had the pleasure of doing a real brief Zoom interview with KSN News on Friday when I came into the office. So that was, uh, unfortunate experience for anybody that had to watch that because I'm sure I was not looking my best, but they called and said, hey, 30 minutes from now, we got a story going. So it was my one opportunity. We do have the, uh, the vote tomorrow with an important local sales tax election, uh, on our ballot. And, um, I, I've spoken multiple times already about what this sales tax is. So I, I'm only going to hit those highlights just a, a couple more times. One of the things I wanted to speak to tonight was, um, one of the stories, one of the narratives I've heard out, out in the community about, um, broken promises. And so I wanted to refer to the Pride and Progress Sales Tax of 2016, which is the one that is expiring and it's the one that this new sales tax is going to replace. They're not on top of each other. One is a replacement when the other expires. Um, so the real quick highlights are that the current sales tax expires in September of 2026. If approved, this sales tax takes effect when that one expires. Okay? So they are not layering on top of each other. They have almost the exact same wording as one another and the same mix uh, or splits of how the funding will be used with the one difference being is that a vote in favor of this new version of the sales tax explicitly has language that allows council to utilize those resources to help tackle the walking infrastructure, the sidewalks in town, the neighborhoods that folks have contacted you and contacted staff about that are not walkable the way that they should be. This has language in it that allows for some of those resources to be used where you do not have a dedicated funding source right now of any scale to help you tackle the problem. Okay? So 50% of the sales tax is going to be used for streets and sidewalk maintenance, 20% for capital and general capital improvement projects. The other 30% goes to the general fund and property tax reduction. So even in its structure, part of what the sales tax accomplishes is a property tax, a mill levy reduction. The equivalent that we have seen based on historic collections is about a 6.8 mil difference or a 12.4% reduction in property taxes because sales tax is covering those projects, those operations that, uh, property tax otherwise would have. So the sales tax not passing does have a property tax impact, either in the sense that you have to make up that gap or you have to make significant cuts somewhere to, to, um, make up that difference that you're going to lose from sales tax not being in the budget. Okay? So now I want, I want to move on from that material because that's all the material that we've covered in the past. But again, just letting people know that you are voting on something that's not stacking on your existing tax rate. It is taking the place when the other one expires. So the best way to look at it is a 10-year extension with new language that allows also for some of the money to be used for sidewalk maintenance. Okay? So what I wanted to speak to now was this idea of promises kept. And specifically as it relates to Pride and Progress Sales Tax, this is the history for the 2016 issue. Okay? When we put together the 2020, or the 2016 ballot measure, it got a name for the first time. That's where the name Pride and Progress came from is we wanted to try to give our community something to rally behind. Before that, it was always just the street sales tax. That's what people knew it as back to 1991. We just called it the street sales tax. All we did in 2016 was give it a name, Pride and Progress. In addition to that, we decided to say, hey, let's tell people what we're interested in doing with those capital improvement projects and provide those different ideas upfront. So people kind of have some sort of concept what we're looking at. Cause before, um, generally the only, the only money that you had because sales tax wasn't generating a tremendous amount, um, just mainly went back into the infrastructure projects for the most part. You, you had a couple of small one-off things, but the emphasis with Pride and Progress was to try to address some of the quality of life things that people have been asking for in the community for a long time. So we prepared a flyer in 2016, very much like the flyer that we prepared for this one. And this is what the flyer showed. Okay? It says, we have an app for that, the Augusta Pride and Progress Sales Tax. Here were the suggested capital projects from 2016. And I'm showing this to you so then I can show you what we actually built and speak to the, the issue of delivering on the promises of those, of that sales tax. Talked about for the suggested capital projects, the Garvin Park Sports Complex, the Shriok Park Splash Pad, fishing docks, boat ramps at Augusta City Lake, multi-use walking biking trails within the city of Augusta, playground enhancements, skate park, new public works building, municipal airport pavement repairs improvements. And then you get to the, the street maintenance and property tax reduction. But those were the projects that were promised and talked about in that 2016 issuance. The Garvin Park Sports Complex, we tore down that old concession facility. So if people are wondering, what did we spend that money on over the last 10 years? That's what I'm showing you now. We're, we spent it on what we told you we were going to spend it on.
Yes.
The Garvin Park Sports Complex, we tore down that old concessions facility that was in the floodway and flooded every time it rained. We built the brand new concessions facility that also has new restrooms that didn't exist down there previously. And then we added a new restroom facility on the upper level in Garvin by that playground. That was one of the core projects, but it was the first one bullet pointed on that list. The splash pad exists because of the Pride and Progress Sales Tax. It was one of the first projects that we built was that splash pad. But in addition to that splash pad, we built those brand new restrooms. The restrooms were built because we needed a building to house all of the, the, um, mechanical and computer components for the splash pad. So we added restroom facilities that didn't exist in Shriok before either. The pergola structures, all of that. The fishing docks, boat ramps, we added three fishing docks. Unfortunately, the lake's really low right now, so you don't get to take advantage of those. But there are plenty of people that go out there on, on, uh, you know, regular nights and watch the sunset or they go out and, and stake up their claim before the fireworks show and make sure that, that they got those docks before anyone else did. We built the new boat ramp on the west side of the lake a couple of years ago. The multi-use. The multi-use walking biking trails. There's a loop around Shriok Park that didn't exist before we built it. We built it with that sales tax. It used to just be a trail that you'd walk from a gravel parking lot. And you could walk along the shoreline, get over to Garvin Park, but that was it. We built that paved parking lot. We did the trail loop around. We connected that trail to the adjoining neighborhoods to the north where there wasn't a dedicated crossing before. There wasn't a way to get there by foot. That connection was made to the north. And then later with the Ohio project, we connected it from the south end all the way down to Belmont. Then we cut over from Belmont to an existing sidewalk network by the school district property. So now you have a closed-in sidewalk walking trail system where you can walk from the highway Custer Lane on the south end of town all the way up to Belmont, up to Shriok Park, around over to Garvin Park without getting off of a city sidewalk or walking trail. We did that with those small connections that were made. We also built the portion of the rail trail project that exists within the city limits across the downtown and the commercial corridor between Lulu and Frisco. Once we got that built, you were able to walk from Walmart all the way across town to Frisco Street, all the way north on Ohio Street, all the way north to Garvin Park, then go up to David, then go up into the Niebler Edition if you wanted to or continue around on the loop, walk all the way over to Garvin. Those were the two segments that were chosen because they closed gaps in the system and started building this bigger loop that we had envisioned for a long time. Playground enhancements. We rebuilt the Play Park Point twice. A lot of folks may have forgotten about that already, but in 2017, we actually did a community build renovation. That's when Play Park got all of its color. Before that, it was, everything was the same color, if you remember. It was just a faded brown wood that was rotting through. That new metal equipment, all of the painting, all of the color that people got used to those last few years, that was done with sales tax money with a major renovation in 2017, 2018. We had hundreds of volunteers that participated in that. And then we still had to tear it down because everything beneath the ground that we weren't able to replace at that time rotted away anyway. We built the downtown, the Dalton Palmer Memorial Playground in the downtown with the sales tax. We built, we contributed three hundred thousand dollars from the city to the Newcastle Park renovation to replace that playground that we had to tear out. That was all Pride and Progress Sales Tax funded. The skate park, we've been talking about doing that skate park for twenty years, thirty years even. And we allocated a portion of funding from the sales tax to go towards that. But in all of these examples, the sales tax money ended up only being a portion. We went after grants. We went after private funding. We leveraged that money to get other sources to stretch Augusta's dollars further. That's how the sales tax, as limited as it was, was able to do so much. It's because we leveraged it with other resources. The Public Works Building, this is what we built. This is the new solid waste facility. Our old one still exists and we will willingly give tours to anybody that wants to walk through that. But it was nothing to be proud of. It was something that probably shouldn't have even had people operating out of. And so they were in a worse condition than the ones that remained for some of our other workers. So we did that one first. And we built this new solid waste facility that has room for all of our trucks to be inside. It has dedicated break room space, has an office, has an actual locker room space in a room that was built. It's not fully FEMA shelter certified, but it's actually a shelter for our folks to go through because they have never had shelter during a storm before. They go into these old buildings that were never designed to protect them. And so we addressed all of that with that one building. The airport runway, you just got news tonight that we opened on Friday. This was fifteen plus years in the making with our funding coming available with the Pride and Progress Sales Tax in 2016. That's when we started working with the FAA. We ended up putting about eight hundred thousand dollars of the sales tax towards that project to get a roughly eight million dollar project with all of the costs, engineering and everything else combined. All of that being said, those projects are what we spent the least amount of money on from the sales tax because Pride and Progress at its core is the street sales tax. We're just emphasizing different projects. We're showcasing different projects. But at its core, it's street maintenance, street improvements. So I'm not going to go through the list of every street that we were able to touch, but here's some of the images. Anything that you see with a color coding on it is work that was accomplished since 2016 because of that sales tax. Thirty-one miles of our fifty-four miles of streets were maintained or received maintenance or improved in some way because of that project or because of the sales tax. In some cases, North Ohio Street, you had a full reconstruction all the way down to base because what we had before was a couple of inches of asphalt sitting on dirt. A lot of these streets were not built to a modern standard that actually had the correct subgrade and base and all of that. And so we had a few really expensive projects of that nature where we were building from scratch. And then we have other examples like the project we just completed between Loomis Land down to the highway where we were able to utilize preservation techniques, catching roadways at important trigger points before they got to the point of failure. It's not a brand new roadway, but it's a roadway with an extended life that if we don't touch in that fashion, just a few years later, it will be in a failed condition. It's a change in strategy from what we did many years ago where we just waited for roads to fail and then replaced them, which is the most costly way for you to do maintenance. So our strategy now focuses on preservation activities, catching roadways at these important trigger points. That's why you see us accomplishing thirty-one miles of maintenance instead of the few blocks at a time that we used to reconstruct. Okay? At its core, Pride and Progress is street sales tax. Okay, that has never changed. So I just wanted to go through that quickly to showcase and speak to the point of promises about what Pride and Progress Sales Tax was. And everything that you put on that list and sent out to the community is done. We are, at the end of 2026, going to be paying off the last street package. There are no ongoing obligations or debt. It's just finished. It ran its course. What we're asking the community consider is if you feel like that was worthwhile and our community is better for those things, we are asking you to do that for another ten years and allow us to utilize those resources to accomplish similar things and to keep that, what we consider progress, going. Okay? If I go any longer, I'm going to choke myself. So I think I'll probably just end it there, but I just wanted to take a little bit different tact on the presentation tonight and showcase what we've spent the money on, what promises we made, what promises were kept and give people some idea what we're asking in the future. So with that, I'll stop and counsel if you have any questions.
Josh, I want to thank you for going over that. I've been on the council all that time. And I was on the council prior to this 2016 measure. And I want to tell people that are questioning that we haven't touched the brick street districts. The first round of the sales tax, we replaced the curb and gutter on many, many blocks down around Clark, Broadway, Main Street, Columbia. We replaced a lot of curb and gutter in the first couple of feet of brick in from the curb. We redid that. And we did the approaches to the driveways. There's about two to four feet of concrete. So we spent money in the brick district. We're headed back down that way now. So if you'll help us, if you'll help us renew this sales tax for another ten years, I think we might be able to get back down to Clark and Broadway and Main and fix some of the problems now that have developed with the bricks themselves. But the curb and gutter, we put that in under the sales tax from probably 2010. We've been working on that since I've been on the council in 2000.
Well, I've shared this with you all before and publicly. The reality is even with your sales tax, you have more maintenance need than you have money coming in. So the reality is you are always having to make choices and some projects get done while others are waiting to get done. And when you go back through the history, I showed the maps before, the southern end of town, the brick streets, those were some of the first projects done when the sales tax was introduced between the nineteen nineties and like the mid two thousands. The asphalt streets that things were touching now, some of those hadn't been touched in thirty or forty years. They were original streets. And when you shift to a preservation mindset, we have to go to those streets and catch them at the trigger points that they're sitting at and make those investments. That's the whole point of it is catching them at the right time.
Right.
So the areas of town you see done are the areas where that application made sense for that street at that point in time that it currently exists. Now, you can make choices on how to allocate those funds differently and what sort of packages you want in the future. And council has always relied on a citizen-appointed committee, or sorry, a council-appointed committee of citizens to help review those things with staff and make recommendations on what projects get done. What's been done to this point, these all came out of recommendations of that citizen committee, this emphasis on the preservation. Even the areas of town where we've been in came out of that committee. And we've just ridden those recommendations for a few years. That's done now and we have to come up with new project packages now and figure out how we're going to incorporate sidewalks. So it's a new day, but I would argue same progress. And I think that is progress, being able to touch that many of your streets. It's not perfect because it's not enough. And it doesn't cover everything, but it's what's enabled progress. And I would argue that most anything that any citizen in town has ever given staff credit for or called me and given me credit for or something that they say actually improved their quality of life over the last ten years that I've been here, has been something that that sales tax provided to them. So that's my pitch for it again. Yeah. That would be my argument or that's my anecdotal evidence of what people have told me.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. At this time, we'll move down to call for other matters. And Mr. Moore, I'll start with you tonight.
Appreciate that. Echo that thanks that the mayor shared for current staff and also that are no longer part of city staff that have worked on all those projects for the last almost ten years because that's a pretty impressive list of accomplishments. So appreciate that. We did receive an email with some questions on some various street project questions that I'll forward you if you didn't already receive it. But one that I did want to ask about specifically was Lulu Street where there was a cutout in the street and it's filled with gravel currently. And it's been that way now for quite a while. Do we know, is that a city repair waiting to be done or is that still a contractor waiting to do some work on that?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, but I'll follow up.
Okay, yeah. Outside of that, just encourage everybody to vote tomorrow and remember that we're all neighbors.
Mr. Brown?
Uh, one thing I should have brought up with the airport. While I was talking to one of the people, there was something about a fence on the east side of the airport that's in bad condition and possibly cows are getting through it. Just figured I'd bring that up and let somebody know that was said to me. They were concerned that.
We're aware that advisors are bored and discussed that. They're aware and they're.
Okay, working on that. Fair enough. That's all I had tonight.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Richardson?
I just wanted to see if there's a way that we can win these, when we have various boards that are appointed, that we can get an update to council. Just like with this one, you know, it's been a month ago so that we've had the meeting and all of a sudden we get inundated with stuff on a weekend and trying to make a decision today when it would have been nice to have it a couple of weeks down the, in the past and stuff. We could have kind of known that was coming to us and could have done some background and looking at that. So I just, you know, I don't know what the exact answer is. We get a feedback from that either the person's on there or, you know, to you guys or whatever so that we could, we kind of have no heads up that those things are coming. And then is there a way we can get the, our website updated on that? The last minutes on there from the airport advisory board was from May of 2023. Kind of helped out a little bit too.
Anything else?
Nope, I'm done.
Nothing. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Bailey?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Burton?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Martin?
Just two things. Clark Street was underwater again when we had our deluge the last few days. It was a mess down there. I drove through there and looked around. Could help. I think it needs some help, but I just wanted to repeat that, what we brought up last two weeks ago. And by the.
Which part of Clark Street?
Pardon me?
Which part of Clark Street?
Just behind Casey's. Going west, the whole part in there. It's just, it doesn't drain very well and.
It's probably never going to either.
Well, it could be. I don't know. I'm not going to approach it, but.
Just remember the history I tried to share with you. That was not even a street. And.
A lot of people use it now though. I mean, to drive down around through Casey's around and, but. Up at the point where there's a trash container, I guess the road's really, I don't know, it gets fixed and then it gets beat up and with the rain, it's opened up again, I guess, or something of that nature. I got a call on that today. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, Lulu Street is a city repair. Says it's a storm drain repair that they have scheduled with a contractor, but it got delayed by the rain.
Mr. Mayor?
Just a minute. We've had inquiries about the crack ceiling. And Anthony told me the other night that the crack ceiling, it requires twenty-four to forty-eight hours after any rain or precipitation before they can go back out and resume crack ceiling. So until the rain passes, you won't see any more crack ceiling being done. Just.
Makes sense.
People, part of that letter we got was talking about that. So thank you. Remember to vote tomorrow.
Brown, make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn our meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Josh, I know you're under the weather. Thanks for powering through that.
Hey, chief? You know them little cards you showed us?
Yes, we talked to them. I got a website.
Okay.
You're going to take our photos?
You're going to take our photos?
If we don't, we'll.
I didn't say. Leave it up to me.
Hey, you guys, if you guys are going to that dinner Saturday night, it is a dress-up thing, just so you know. I went last year and it's a dress-up thing. It's a formal dress-up thing.
Kind of formal.
Right. I'm serious.